This is going to be the city council meeting for City of Port Ritchie Tuesday, September 28th. At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Lord for the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Blessings. Lord, it's your delight for us to trust in your goodness and look out for the best of each other. Lord, loving our neighbors ourselves, and Lord, here in our city, we thank you for just imparting continually your heart and wisdom to our mayor and council. Lord, we pray that you just make Port Ritchie a peaceful, helpful place with the wisdom to be wise in the days we live in. And, Lord, we constantly think of our first responders. We pray that you would watch over them, Lord, protect them, and give them all that they need and show them favor. Lord, we pray for the workers to be fruitful in every good work and deed in our city, Lord God, and that we want to thank you for the unifying of our staff. Thank you that they would flow together, relating, and just complimenting one another, Lord God, and advancing our city and your perfect purposes. So, Lord, we just look to you tonight for your wisdom from above, your peace from in, and your joy to strengthen us in being here, and just ask your blessing on this time, in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Scott Tremblay.
Here.
Vice Mayor William Dipmer. Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell.
Here.
Councilman Todd McClary.
Here.
Councilman Tom Kinsella.
Here.
City Attorney James Matthew.
Here.
City Manager John Duke.
Here.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve council minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we're going to open up with comments from the general public. First up is Pastor Lord. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I want to thank Pat Rogers for filling in last week and was able to get Sal and take care of that, so thank you, Pat. The wife wasn't very well, needed to be with her, but she's better, so I just thank the Lord for that. I do just really want to compliment the city and thank you for letting us use the park for Care Fest. It was really good because we had one of our commissioners and some people from the county, and so they were able to be there and see Port Ritchie actually hosting a Care Fest to go out in the community. Just kind of a report there. There was one couple that had lost a son in their 70s, so while they were gone, we were able to mow their yard and trim that up. Another senior lady, this from Senior Nutrition Reports, they cleaned her yard up, trimmed her bushes, and put screens on the front porch, so she'll come out of the hospital with everything in order. Also, a lot of seniors can't clean, so we had a lot of cleanup in some of the homes. Holiday, they trimmed a tree over here at Hillendale. A lady had her fence lined growing up, couldn't let her animals out, so actually Commissioner Fitzpatrick and the team went and took care of her and was able to share all of the things for the seniors and how Pasco County has money for roofs, for air conditioning, and any handicap things, wheelchairs and all, which was really an impart to it. And also, some workers that worked on some plumbing, and it was mostly yard cleanup and home stuff. But I just want to thank the city. To me, it was a joy to go out as a part of Port Ritchie and it be hosted there, and people come and go out in this community. And also, I particularly want to thank our police and fire department because somebody come running from the playground and says, "Get over there, some lady's had a stroke," I heard. So, we went over and began to help them and pray, and I said, "Did anybody call 911?" They were on the phone. The police was right there. The fire department was there, and so, thank you. And she was just heated. We prayed and it come out good. They got to stay and finish the day out. So, it's just a joy to be working with y'all. And real quick, what we've got coming up is we do have our Fall Festival, and thank you. I apologize for the short notice on that, but if you can join us, our annual fish fry will be moved to the park. I think it'll be good and have treats for the kids, try to keep them off the street. And so, we're looking for a great time there. I'll have you flyers on that next time. You had the preliminary, but we're doing a finalized one. Also, our Thanksgiving dinner every year, two Sundays before Thanksgiving, we invite the city out for a Thanksgiving dinner on a Sunday morning there at noon. So, we'll be bringing that. And also, the Christmas in the park. If the city does it, we serve them. If they don't, we'll need to get a permit and have Christmas in the park. So, these are some things. I just want to say it's a joy to serve y'all, and we, as God's people, wants to know more, how to help y'all make our city a peaceful and a healthy place that we work together. So, Lord bless you and thank you all so much.
Thank you, Pastor Lord. The next person signed up is David Solheim. Welcome. If you could, please come on up and put your name and address on the record for me. Yes, no, right here at the mic. Yes, sir.
Just speak it.
No, you can just tell us your name and address.
Okay, all right. I thought you reminded me. But write it down.
No, that's okay.
Good evening. My name is David Solheim. I live at 5538 Quist Drive. And I'm not happy giving this report tonight. Usually, my stuff is upbeat, but there's a little negativity in here. But I consider myself the messenger, so please don't shoot the messenger on this one. Quality of the concrete work in our city with specifically waterfront park. Question, do any of you go out and inspect the quality of the concrete work in the city after it's been done? Can't see. Especially in waterfront park. The quality of the concrete work in the city, I'm sorry. If so, you might want to take a closer look next time you go. I don't believe this. And ask yourself, would I accept this quality work in my own house? If you had a driveway improved or a sidewalk or something, and then you went over to the park and looked at the quality of the work, and they did the same thing in your house, I think every one of you would say, "Get that out of here." There's something wrong going on. It's just horrible what's being over there, being done over there. Do I blame the workers because they don't know? Because that's the easiest person you could blame? No. I blame all of us because we're asking them to do something, in my opinion, that they've never been trained to do. And that is work in concrete. This is a skill. It takes years for guys to really get good at it. We have people come in here, they don't know how to do it, but yet, we assign them to do it. And then, the city pays the price because if you look at it, it's already falling apart in some places. It's cracking. It's just horrible work. I think that's all I'm saying. Yes. That was it for this. And I don't have time to give you all the details, so I will just mention the highlights of some work that was done across the street from my house last week. A drain collapsed, or the sidewalk collapsed at one of those street drains for the stormwater where it goes in. Just a big chunk of it fell in there. And so, they came out, I think it was Thursday, and they worked on it. And while I was listening, they were out there, I was thinking, "I wonder if this is the same group that does the park." So, I went out and I looked at them. Again, I'll just get right to the point on this. I could talk for a long time. I noticed that there was rebar in there where they're going to fill in the hole over the drain. There's no dirt or anything. It's all open air. And there was rebar in their box that they're going to pour the concrete into. It's about six inches apart. I thought that was really good. The concrete chute was pulled over. Concrete was poured into the, oh, can't find it, the form, and all heck broke loose. The rebar, when the concrete went in, from being real nice and set in place, went sliding all over the place, just disappeared into the corners. All the rebar snugged up against itself. The worker and another one jumped in. They tried to push it back, and it kept on getting pushed back, and then it filled up, you know, in seconds. Takes no time. Gravity's got that concrete. What else am I saying here to each other? Let me just get to what I noticed that, just watching this whole thing take place. It was complete confusion. These poor guys didn't know what they were doing. And I don't blame the workers. They're here. They're not trained to work. Did I say that already? They're not trained to work on the concrete, and yet, we send them out to do it. And I said, the city pays the price. So, here's what I learned when I watched them. The workers and the supervisor, if he was there, do not know that pieces of rebar, when in contact with each other, with another piece of rebar, must be secured at that point where they meet. Otherwise, there's no structure there at all. They do not move apart when the concrete is dumped in with them. That's the whole purpose of wiring it together. They didn't know that they were supposed to do that. The second thing I noticed was that the rebar was not up off the bottom of the form where they're, so that it allows the concrete to go under the rebar. It's supposed to be up inside the pad, in the middle somewhere. None of it was lifted up, and they have a tool you can use, a hook, to pull it up. That's how it's done. This was not done at all, and there was no tool or anything that they were even going to do it. So, we've ended up over there with like a little bridge going over an opening underneath, no dirt to support it. We've got rebar not supporting it because it's been pushed away. We have the other thing. I can't even remember. Sorry, guys. I'm a little nervous here tonight. We have, what I don't know, because I'm not a concrete man, I don't know if that's a hazard for the future or not. I don't know what the surface underneath their form was. If it was thick steel, great. They were probably in good shape. If it was a couple of pieces of plywood, and our rebar is gone from the support, that's a potential problem in the future. So, that's why I thought I should bring it to your attention and ask you that if we ever have a concrete truck deliver concrete to our city again, please, set up the alarms or something and alert all city employees they are not allowed to pick up a shovel. Don't hire, I mean, don't let any of our city employees touch concrete again. They just are not trained unless we want to train them. Otherwise, look at the work in the park over there. You'll see how horrible it is. And in this one, and now, I don't know that it's a threat or it's a safety hazard, or it'll be like that forever. But this is what goes on when we're not held to some kind of standards. And nobody goes out. None of you go out that I see because it wouldn't be like this if you saw it. Because I'm convinced if you go over there tomorrow and look at those sidewalks and you think about your own house, you say, "Definitely not." I mean, there's even little footprints in there. And you can see in a couple of places where it got away from them, and it wasn't working, and it was setting up and panic set in because there's this all over the place. That's not what we need in our city. This place could be a diamond, but not with work like that. So, it just calls for, I think, just educating them, reassigning them. I don't want anybody to get hurt over this, but I don't want us to get hurt over it either. And I don't think we have to look at stuff like this in a nice community. It's just garbage work because they've had no training.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing. No, you're perfect. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Solheim. I think our city manager's taken some notes, and we'll take a look at those issues, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solheim. Have a good night. That's all that signed up. Would anyone else like to speak? Mr. Mueller, and then Ms. Rogers is next. Mr. Mueller, come on up. Ladies first. Ms. Rogers, come on up.
Pat Rogers, 4838 Sunset Boulevard. While we were over at the park on Saturday, several people complained to me about the road, which has got some major potholes in it. Big ones. And they kept wondering why the city hadn't fixed them. Well, I kept telling them that the city was, you know, doing the best they could. They were short-staffed, and they could only get through people in so many places at one time. But it's really rough on the vehicles. I'm sure that everybody knows it, but it needs to be on the list.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Mr. Mueller, welcome. Come on up.
Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive. And thank you. That was on my list. But I did want to also mention there was a piece of rebar that I had mentioned several months back, and somebody took care of it, so that's a win. They knocked that down. I don't see it poking up in the ground for somebody to be impaled on anymore. But the point that David made about some concrete work and not having good contact with wire tying the rebar together, and I believe that's supposed to be inspected prior to pouring, so somebody's cutting corners, and I don't know who it is, but I would like to see us get to the bottom of it, especially if it's something that the city is guiding. Certainly, if there was a contractor engaged pouring concrete, I think there's legal remedies that we can probably address, and it's probably worthwhile. I mean, you potentially have some liability issues. And if we're paying for shoddy work, I mean, that's not the way to go. So, I would like to see somebody follow up on that, and let's have a discussion at the next meeting to say, "Hey, what happened, and how is it going to be remedied?" Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. At this time, would anyone else like to speak? Seeing no hands, we're going to move on, and I'd like to invite our city manager, Mr. Duke, for commentary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dredging project, Canal's 26A and 1, we made contact with county interlocutor today. No update from Treasury, no additional information from county, so that one is as it was two weeks ago. Cote River Landing project, Phase 1 estimate, cost estimates were sent out today. Those were received from Ayers last week. There's additional surveying going on right now. They are adding that to the topography work that was done a week ago. Ayers told me today they've added a second designer to the project. They are still on schedule. They expect to have conceptual plans ready for us in about six weeks. We've got meetings set this week for PBA and CWA. Had the opportunity to meet with Fire Department's Medical Director a couple of days ago. That was my first meet and greet with Dr. Boothby. Two weeks ago, right after council meeting, two weeks ago, I was on a conference call with White House staff about ARPA funding and their guidance. They clearly had a message for us, and that was spend the money. A number of municipalities had very pointed questions about projects and approvals and how is that going to work. That's where the guidance got real fuzzy. No real guidance from the White House, other than you have your interim guidance. The final guidance will be forthcoming soon, shortly, hopefully, next month. And so, we are anxiously awaiting the final guidance from Treasury for ARPA funds. But a lot of other cities, like we, are already making plans and developing budgets for the ARPA money that they anticipate receiving. Our application, which you approved, has been submitted. As of today, we had not received the money yet, but I'm sure our finance director will let us know when that lands in the bank. Limestone Park, the fishing pier has been closed. Sent out that note earlier today to all of you. There is pretty significant damage on the deck, and it is unsafe. And I know this council wrestled with that several years ago. We're going to have to get an engineer out, take a look at not only the deck, but the underpinning, and make sure that the pier is safe before we let people back on. So, if your phone rings, it's because I closed it. And folks have been cutting down the tape that we put up so they can go back out and enjoy the pier. But we're going to have to make it a little more secure so that folks don't get out there until we know for sure that it's safe. The 555 Grant has been submitted. That's a $15,000 grant for exercise equipment for emergency responders. 555 is a nonprofit organization. Their mission is to improve the health of fire and police and EMS personnel, and they award grants of exercise equipment, and so, we've submitted that grant. Hopefully, within the next month or so, we'll be advised that we've been awarded the exercise equipment, and that'll go in the Police Department here at City Hall. There's no match to that, so there's no additional cost to the city. Upcoming CRA manager, Pam Lynch, and I will be attending the Florida Redevelopment Association Conference later this month. First opportunity for both of us to get together with CRA-minded folks and hear the latest from them. So, we're looking forward to that. That's all I have. I stand for your questions. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kinsella, any questions?
One question. Is that audit any more word?
Have not heard any more word. No questions in the last two weeks. No additional information, so.
And on the funds that we are receiving, could that be something applied towards the fishing pier?
Possibly. I would probably want to wait for the final guidance to see if we can fit that in, but obviously, that's a big-ticket item that, and staff and I are working on, we'll have it for you at our next council meeting, a long and detailed list of projects that fit into that funding. I assure you, we have many more projects than what we're going to have funding for in both years of ARPA. So, but we'll have that list for you, and given today's circumstances, we'll put that pier on the list as well. And we'll be talking about another fishing pier later on this evening, but yeah, we'll put that on the list.
My question was pertaining to the audit, so.
No additional information. No questions received.
I didn't have any further questions.
I did have one. With Ayers, I thought we were going to have our conceptual drawings by the end of this month. So, now, they're saying two more weeks?
Six weeks, end of October.
Okay. I thought it was the end of September originally, so we bring that to their attention that.
Will do.
Yep. That's all I have. Thank you.
At this time, I was going to open comments from either council or myself. I'm going to start at the other direction since. I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
At this time, we're going to move on to comments from any boards or committees. I didn't see where anyone signed up, but I see that there's boards and committees here. No comments, so we're going to move on. At this time, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve.
I have one question before we approve. The payment to Ayers Engineering. Actually, kind of queuing off of what you said, we're paying them for design development of $13,000. If they haven't delivered the design development yet, how are we paying them $13,000?
My assumption is by time, but if Rachel has anything to add.
I believe it's in stages. I can pull the invoice for you tomorrow, but I believe it's just in stages that we pay them.
Yeah, I mean, I just am concerned if that $13,000 is for the completion of the design development, and we're not getting that for another six weeks, we shouldn't be paying them.
It's not for completion, no.
Anything further? All right, so we have, did we have a motion yet for this? A motion, looking for a second. Any further comment, Miss Suri? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to move on to council business at this time. And this is approval of purchase of 250 vehicles for the Utility Department. And I believe this was from last week. It was passed over. So, I want to pass this to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a continuation of the discussion we had two weeks ago. Council wanted additional information, which staff has provided. The low bid remains the low bid and would request approval to purchase the two trucks.
I'm going to open for, what are you, you looking for a motion at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Going to open it either for motion and/or discussion.
Motion approved purchase of two F-250 vehicles for the Redevelopment Department.
Second.
Before we put it to a vote, I had just had one question. The funding source was out of utilities? That's what I thought.
Yes, 100% of utilities.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that's what I thought. Before we vote, we're going to open it to the public. We have a motion and a second. Before we vote, anyone from the comment, want to comment from the general public? Seeing no hands at this time, we'll just put it to a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Onto item four, which is approval of purchase of a VAC truck or VAC truck. And I'm going to pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The VAC truck is something we discussed and by consensus moved forward, discussed in the budget process. So, this is our request to get your approval and move forward with the purchase of the VAC truck. Conditions changed somewhat since we last talked about it. Our existing VAC truck failed. It required heavy tow. It's under reconstruction at this time, and we're currently renting a VAC truck when we need it. So, that timeline moved along a little quicker than we anticipated.
So, and can you refresh? I know that we budgeted, we just went through a budget meeting, but just for the general public and to refresh our recollection, can you talk about the funding source and the different funding options for this?
Funding source comes from utilities, as I recall, which have more than adequate funds in them. Our intent is to lease purchase the VAC truck. And total purchase price, $448,534. We've got, I believe, we've got a rep from the company if you want a technical input on the actual vehicle.
I have a question. The VAC truck that we're currently renting is at $12,000 per month.
That's the number.
Are we anticipating? How long will it take us to get this replacement VAC truck? I mean, our fire truck took longer than we anticipated. So, how many months do we anticipate renting the VAC truck?
I think we're, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're two months out. If we approve it tonight, they start building and.
No, let me correct you.
Okay.
We've already been in contact with the company with a letter of intent on this truck, of course, agreeing to what this decision was tonight, and, you know, the CIP plan. The truck is actually on the lot waiting for us. It's on hold for us with a lot of other people looking at it. So, I do have a truck, they do have a truck on the lot. This specific one that we're looking at is on the lot right now. So, the intent is, is that as soon, if we get approval tonight, I've already talked to the associate who's with us tonight to go ahead and get everything finalized so we can basically take the rental back and bring the other one here.
Like six months ago, you're expecting $16,000?
We're definitely trying to avoid that.
Triple A to the budget.
And one of the, okay, thank you. I'm sorry. One of the questions that I had is I know that we have some ARPA money coming in. I know that we can agree to amortize this over time for now when we purchase the truck. Is it possible to put the cost of this truck on the ARPA discussion, when we discuss the ARPA money? So, that way, if we want to pay it off early and we have ARPA funds and that's available and able to be used for this, which is a discussion for another day, can we revisit this issue?
Of course.
Okay. Is the council okay with that as well?
Yeah, a first lease payment would not be due for another year. And so, if we decide that our, one, if the final guidance gives us the leeway to do that, obviously, and then if it's your will for us to do that, absolutely.
Because that's something I'd like to at least have a discussion on, is I'd prefer to pay it off if we can rather than amortize it over time. You know, but I am uncomfortable with that discussion at this point because of not knowing where the ARPA funds are going and how they're supposed to be used. So, I'm certainly for the purchase. The other question I had is I think at the budgeting time, that when we budgeted for this, I think that, for some reason, I thought it was in the 350 range that we had budgeted. What was the amount that was budgeted for this truck?
I budgeted the lease payment.
Pardon me?
We budgeted the lease payment.
Correct, but what was the total price?
It was close to 450.
Okay, so it came in what we budgeted for?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure we were in budget when we're purchasing this.
Yes, we are.
And I think that at the budget meeting, we talked somewhere in the neighborhood of 70 grand a year?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct. The only issue I would see is if you want to then use ARPA later, is if the lease contract doesn't allow an early option to, to buy out.
It does, it does not?
I'm saying, I don't know if it, it will or not, sometimes they'll also, you know, charge a fee for doing that as well, because they're not getting their interest on it.
That's, that's something that we may be able to control during the contracting phase, correct?
Yes, we can put that into the negotiation of finance.
Yeah, it would just depend on the bank, really.
Okay. Those are the questions that I had, just on the, some of the funding issues, but I wanted to open up to the panel for any others.
Yeah, the only thing I'd see is, is the proposal is, is saying that it's coming out of the utility funds, but also on page 87, it says penny for Pasco and utility, is it all utility or?
Yes, that's a typo, it should be all utility fund.
The question I had, it's 448,000, I'm not disputing the, the need, especially now, have we gone out to other vendors and compared the pricing for this, or?
This, this truck is basically a sole-source situation as far as the, this vendor is the only distributor of this vehicle within the entire state of Florida. As I'm looking for it, I have Will Anoka here, he's from the, the company that distributes this truck. Will, if you would mind coming up here and explaining the. This is Will Anoka, he's the, he's the vendor for the distributor, so.
Yeah, Will Anoka, I'm with him from all Fox Group, so I'm the sales manager for this region, so I work with Pasco County and Date City, everyone in this area, so. Can you just repeat the question, is that okay?
Well, there, there's no other comparative pricings, is this off of a piggyback, or is this?
So this is actually on Sourcewell contract, so Sourcewell's a nationally negotiated pricing, so it doesn't matter if it's Pasco County bought off that same contract for a Vactor as well. So it's all nega, nationally negotiated, as well as so like a city, like say it was Jacksonville, they'd be, they'd purchase all the same contract.
So, so it's pre-negotiated pricing?
Yep.
Competitively bid out?
Oh, 100%.
And then, and then we are just pulling off of that?
Yep, this is a piggyback contract, just like for shares or whatever else, it's, it's national, so.
And I guess a question like, similar to the other two trucks we had, it was Duval versus, I forgot the other.
Yeah, that's not what it is.
Name, they both had pre-sourced contracts, but they came up with different pricing. Is that similar to this situation, or is it?
This is different because as of, on page 94 of the agenda, they are the only distributor of this particular vehicle, so it's, the, the other, the other pickup trucks, that's Ford, and that was different Ford, Ford vendors, they're the only ones who deal with Vactor.
And our price would be the same no matter, no matter what, because it's nationally negotiated, it's a national contract.
It's a federal contract, Sourcewell's a federal contract, and from page 97 on, on this item, explains everything from the Sourcewell pricing that matches the vendor pricing, that they have to meet by federal standards.
And we are, we are the dealer, so this is actually, the pricing is done through the manufacturer themselves, so we're just, just the dealer for the product, so.
And I guess, one last question, and I don't want to open a can of worms, but is there any other Vactor trucks available in the state of Florida that would give similar or better pricing, or, again, I don't know anything about Vactor trucks, so please forgive me.
Well, we're, we're talking about the specific distributor of, Vactor is the, the brand, the name, the name brand.
So is there a Chevy of Vactor, I guess is what I'm asking?
There are, well, I mean, there are competitive other companies of that, you know, of that truck, to say that there's no other vendor in existence that makes another type of vacuum truck, there are, but as far as having a federal contract that they have to go by, this is why we chose them, because this is the same, this is the same contract that we picked the first truck for, and the fact that that truck lasted us 14 years, and then also the fact that it's, you know, they're going by national federal standards, and have to meet, and have to, pricing, they have to meet that. Even, even with the chassis part of it, because they received, you know, the, the chassis is, you know, either a Peterbilt or Freightliner truck, that truck also has to be priced at a wholesale rate per the Sourcewell contract, so they have to meet all those standards.
Do you guys have any further questions for?
I have no further questions.
That's all I had for you as well, thank you.
Thank you.
I, my questions are more geared towards our finance department, because obviously this is coming off a federal contract, which, since I've been sitting here, I don't think we've done that before, that I can recall. I know we piggyback, but they're normally off state contracts. Do we actually have the, the federal contracts, do we know exactly what we're getting and what we're paying, and, and all the details?
Well, as far as, as far as leasing, and I'll, I'll give that to Rachel, we've, we can lease the truck as we see fit, we don't have to, you know, we're buying, but the pricing is federal, but we can select the leasing, you know, the leasing program, so it's.
We pick the bank.
Yes, we pick the bank.
Okay. But I mean, even with the pricing, do they have a standard contract that they send if it's, if it's a piggyback, it should be the same contract for, for these things across the country, do we have a copy of that contract?
And I apologize, are you asking if we have the federal contract here?
Yeah.
Because that's in the agenda.
Is it, I didn't see it.
It's basically starting. From page 97? Ends at page 113. Now, there are several more pages of this, as far as like the, you know, and I, on page, on page 112, I pulled that page specifically out of 1,400-page report to show that us, City of Fort Ritchie, has used this, this contract before, for other different instances, so, and as you can see, I, I didn't want to, I didn't have, you know, I didn't want to print the entire report of how many cities, counties, and towns within Florida alone utilize this federal contract for a numerous amount of items. It's not, obviously, just not for trucks, but multiple different types of products, and as well as, you know, as well as services.
Well, I, I understand that, but I, like when we were with the fire truck, it was a big purchase like this, it was just broken out different, it was itemized down to the, to the color and every hose and every, and every button on there, and we were able to break it down and look, and I just, you know, I saw that this had some line items, but for the truck that's actually sitting there, that, I guess we're going to get, meets all the criteria that's in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the truck that we're getting, and the, and, and, like I said, starting page 97, every highlighted item is exactly what we're getting from the, from the vendors, from the truck that the vendor's providing, they, they're a match.
And I don't mean to be difficult, but I'm still trying to get in my head around Vactor truck versus Chevy Vactor truck, and Ford Vactor truck versus Chevy Vactor truck. I understand that this is a, a national contract and that sort of thing, but is there something else available that's more economical, or do they price match, or are we paying a $50, you know, the, the federal $50 for a hammer type thing?
The issue is, and like I said before, this goes by as far as, as far as technical know-how and preference, once again, that the current vehicle that we've had, you know, was, you know, lasted us for 14 years, we went, we went with the same type of, the same type of vehicle, and also with the same type of contract standards, to go from that to get the lowest pricing possible. Could I look for another truck from another company? Sure, but also we have to reflect at this, at the situation that we're at now. The situation is currently, I have a 14-year-old truck that is down, we are paying $12,000 a month to rent a vehicle, I would have to continue that if we're going to continue shopping. The vehicle that I have on hold with this company is already being sought by several counties and several other entities, that's a fact. I've also looked into used company, uh, used trucks from this vendor, and they are not allowed to sell any of their rental vehicles, which is what they would sell us as a used vehicle, because they're in so much in demand. I'm not trying to put anyone in any type of position, but that just, relaying exactly where we're at right now. There are other companies, there are, you know, there's a Vaccon type of company, there's, there's another one, but as far as the dependability and, and just basic, basic know-how with other entities that I've worked with, and utility companies in Pasco County, Newport Ritchie, they prefer this model, they prefer this company. And I, I can bring Will back up here, and he could explain to you how many different counties and cities order this vehicle from them every year, so.
So Newport Ritchie has pulled off of the same contract, the same?
They would, they would definitely do that. Like I said, this report, I just reflected what Port Ritchie has already used Sourcewell before as a contract, but Newport Ritchie, Pasco County, Hernando County, I can go on, but it's 1,400-page report, and that's just Florida alone of how many have utilized Sourcewell, a Sourcewell contract.
So I, I guess, I was looking in the wrong place, so the actual truck description that we're getting with all the amenities starts on page 91 to 94, is that correct, or 93 would be the last page?
93 is the last page, and that's the vendor quote. And then the Sourcewell quote starts at page 97, just basically to show, you know, show counsel that the Sourcewell contract quote matches exactly the same as the vendor.
But the truck that we're getting has everything that's on page 91 through 93, I guess is what I'm getting.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that, that's where my confusion was, I was looking back further and I didn't
I had one question. If we did do that, you would have to go out to bid, correct, if we looked at a different source, and that would take several month process, I'm assuming, to get all those bids together, and at $12,000 a month, I'm sure it would eat up any price differential in a vehicle.
And that's true, if any of these other companies that we did want to sort out were not part of a state contract or a federal contract, then yes, it would have to go out to bid, and of course you have to allow a certain amount of time of advertising and the set price for anyone to go ahead and bid for that, so that'd be another 60, 90 days out, minimal.
That's what I thought.
And, and I guess the most important question is, all the amenities on this truck are here, when I say amenities, all the functions and all the equipments here, is anyone from the city who's going to be using the truck look at this, and is this exactly what they want? You know, I know it's one that's available, but is, does it have everything they need and want?
Richard Weeks is with us tonight, he's the Public Works Utilities Department, that is, he's, he carries a CDL, he's one of the only operators of the Vact, one of two operators of the Vactor truck, him and I have personally worked with Will to go over the specifics and every item that was on the truck that we have on hold, and Richie, unless you have any disagreements that I'm talking about tonight.
And, and for me, the only thing that makes me uneasy about this is, the fire truck, we had a lot of time to look at it, to go through everything that, that they wanted outlined, they went back and forth to the factory and they had it made exactly what, how they wanted, this one, it is just what it is, so, but we don't want to spend a lot of time and spend a lot of money waiting for it either, so, looking for a motion.
Motion to approve Vac truck purchase. Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? We do have someone that signed up, Mr. Mueller, welcome, come on up.
Thank you, Dave Mueller, 5439, Blue Point Drive. Well, I, I think it sounds like we're in dire straits right now, and we, and we probably need one. I think part of the planning process, when a presentation is made, is what do we do with the rest of this stuff? We have an old Vac truck that somehow we need to get rid of, or use it as a backup, will this stuff pull sludge out of a canal, and use it for doing that kind of stuff? Don't know. But what I would like to see is multiple quotes, and I understand you're over a barrel right now, but in the future, maybe running multiple quotes to ensure that we get the best price and value for the taxpayers in this community. But once again, I'm, I'm probably for getting something like this, and I think one of the issues with the last one was, is it was rusting out in the tank, and I think I saw that this one has got a stainless tank, if, if I read that correctly. The other concern I had, the old truck was a Sterling, I guess that's, I don't know whether that's a pump or a truck, I'm, I'm kind of in, in the camp with Mr. McLaren, are we, are we getting a Cadillac here, I mean, are we getting something that's going to go obsolete again and can't find parts for? I like Freightliner, I like Peterbilt, I recognize those names, I've never heard of a Sterling, so hopefully we're on the right page there. And, you know, it's not the only game in town, but given where we are and, and the need that the city has to continue to maintain our systems, I, I think this is probably a worthwhile move. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller, would anyone else like to speak?
Sure. So, no, I mean, so this truck that is built out, just for your, your, your knowledge, it's like 95% of our municipalities are part of it, so, and we have the highest market share as well, so Vactor is one of the oldest brands in the industry, it started back in the 60s, they are, they are the biggest name in the industry, so just to give you a heads up, doesn't matter Hillsborough County, Pasco County, Date City, just pick one up as well, so, just to give you a little background, how spec is what has been reviewed probably the past few years of how they would want to have their truck, some of the features enhancements that have been done over the past few years really apply to this truck, so there's a special boom for it, how them just work just easier, and be able to reach deeper, and not have to stand over hole, manholes, as well as lift stations, so there's a lot of things, and the chassis that's on, yeah, the old one that you have, that's 14 years old, is a Sterling, and that chassis in Long Creek is manufactured, the one that's on right now, the one that's on the lot, Ray Rock, is on a Kemworth, so Kemworth and, and Peterbilt are owned by the same company, so, it's like Chevy GMC. So yeah, we have multiple stock trucks, just, situation is just like yourself, so, hey, we, our truck is, is completely shot, or we need another truck to add to the fleet, and we're, one only deal is actually have inventory and stock, and we actually, this is a perfect situation for that, so I just wanted just to clarify anything and, you know, rest it, you know, put the rest, anything you guys have any questions with it, but yeah, this isn't, this isn't just a one, one truck, this is, we're, we have all the municipalities managed, so.
The only other question I had would have, would have to do with whether or not there's warranties or maintenance package, and whether or not that's part of the price.
So, you mean you have the warrant, the basic warranties on the truck, so you got that one-year full, full warranty, remember you have a Vactor right now, so it's just replacing the current Vactor that you have, so you got the one-year, two-year on the pump, five-year on the pre-body, 15, or 10 years on the water tanks, all that is just industry standard, and then when it comes down to if you want to purchase extended warranties, you're more than welcome to. That's just your discretion, so. Ultimately, though, we have full service, we have four different locations, we have four, Georgia, Memphis, Harfisaw, Caribbean, and we're the sole dealer for them, so, yeah, that's how we rock.
Just to, just to add, on page ninety-six, there's highlighted additional, additional factor from two to five year for parts and labor?
Yes.
So, those would be additional parts and labor warranties if we wanted to add to this specific, you know, to the price of this truck.
Is the recommendation now to go with an extended warranty, or?
Well, the vehicle itself comes with two-year, two-year warranty for debris body, five-year warranty and a ten-year warranty on the, on the tank. We did not have one on there before, and like I said, the vehicle, you know, we made, we had that for four, for over fourteen years. That I would have to leave in, you know, council discretion if we wanted to add one.
And what's the cost of the maintenance? Did we have a maintenance package, or?
Broken down, I think. Is that broken down?
No, I saw the warranty broken down, but there's, there's maintenance on the truck too, I'm sure, so.
I'm sorry, it's like, as far as like maintenance to go and take it, if we added a warranty, then that would, that would include parts and labor.
Okay. I got, I understand.
Yeah, we'll come to you as well, you don't have to say it to us. So, we have mobile mechanics, we actually have a patrick in Pasco.
Just, just for clarity, the, the base purchase has a two, has a one-year warranty, parts and labor? And then we can extend it to two years, or five?
We got the whole warranty of the whole, the, the backer body itself.
So, th- these warranties are basically soup to nuts all the way across? And then, on top of that, we have the two-year warranty for body and, and water tanks, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes. I think, I think you did a pump replacement after twelve years of your backer. So, I know your plan is to have it for ten years and, you know, switch it out. And that's a good, good timeline to make some good money on the truck when you do sell it in ten years.
So, really, nothing broke on the first five years of our old truck?
And we didn't really have an issue until about year seven, year eight.
When the warranty ran out?
Yeah. Of course.
I think that's all the, the questions that we had, so thank you. The only other discussion that I wanted to have, at least, because we have a motion in a second, is whether or not we want to look at a warranty. I'm comfortable without one, but I didn't know where you guys were at.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Not a fan of it.
Okay.
Mr. Weeks is going to have to service it.
So, the motion in the second is for clarity, was to purchase the truck pursuant to this, this contract, this truck that we have? And to amortize the payments for now as laid out, as budgeted?
Just to confirm, the, the first amortized payment won't hit until our budgeted year, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Correct.
So, we're essentially just forward, forward buying our next year's budget, correct?
I did provide five and seven-year options, so you'd have to select which one.
Do we need to decide that now, or is it, oh my God, follow decisions?
Those options are on page eighty-eight.
Well, I guess we should first figure out if we're buying the truck and then figure out how we're buying the truck.
Do we know if any of these have the prepa, prepayment penalty involved?
I do not, no.
None of them, or you don't know?
I don't know, no.
So, it looks like we've budgeted the seven-year lease. In our budget plans?
Correct, yeah.
I'm okay with that, knowing that we're, it'll last, I think, the full seven years, and then we can address, address it at that point.
It's also one point nine five interest rate, so.
No, that's, that's the five-year lease.
That was a five-year.
Seven-year lease is, why did we budget, oh, that's, huh, it's weird. Seven-year lease is two point eight five, but it has a low annual payment, which I'm not sure how that worked out, but I guess it's a larger down payment, or?
It's just what I was provided.
Doesn't make sense conceptually. How can you have a two point eight five rate at sixty-eight thousand, but the two point oh nine rate is at sixty-nine thousand?
I agree.
And the interest cost is only twenty, twenty-eight thousand? Unless you have a larger principal payment, then math doesn't work out. I think we may want to look at that one again, because that doesn't make any.
It could be math on their end, but they just give me a piece of paper with the information on it, and I put it in the spreadsheet, so I also thought the same thing.
That makes no sense to me. To that, I'm, and I'm on board with a seven-year lease, I just don't know if.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to purchase.
Do we need to add that to the motion, the seven-year term?
Can we clarify the motion?
Make a motion to purchase the back truck with a seven-year term?
Out of, out of the?
Utility fund.
Utility fund, okay.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Let's put it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to move on to item five, which is going to be the approval of bulk water meter purchase for the keys at Cody River Development on Washington Street. And pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The bulk water meter comes to seventeen thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars, thirty-two cents. It's part of the development plan and development of that parcel of land. It does need a bulk water meter there. There's a justification letter in there from Mr. Lucari to help explain that it's sole sourced because this meter talks to our system. This is, you know, the equivalent of buying a Chevy to fit with a Chevy. Given that it's seventeen thousand dollars, needs your approval to move forward, requesting approval to purchase.
The, the only question I had, so that's, for that development route, they're not going to have separate meters for each building? They're just going to do one master meter for the entire, what is it, one hundred and seventy-two buildings? That's, that's a lot of water going through one meter.
There's two, yes, it's going to be, it's going to be separate meters. It's a separate meter system.
Two master meters? And is, is that within industry standard versus running individual meters to each, each unit? I, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
And plus the fact that it's a private utility system. Their system was not inspected by us, was not signed off by us. It's, it's, it's a utility system on their side, something we don't want to assume because we did not lay those pipes in the ground.
Those pipes were put down a long time ago, too.
Yes, and they've been worked on quite a few times, and, you know, pulled up, put back in several times. This is something I would recommend signing off on, to install private meters in, you know, inside that system.
I was just asking, so the bottom line is, obviously, we're just going to bill for the entire one hundred and seventy-two units out of this one meter, and if there's a leak, that's their problem, not ours, is that, that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you, guys.
Question I had, is, is this a pass-through cost to the developer and they have to pay for the meter itself upon connection?
Uh, yes, because then, this is basically part of the impact fees that they've paid, you know, to develop. So, that's what these meters are actually coming out of, they're coming out of impact fees. I wanted to correct that because there was a typo as far as the funding. This is going to be an impact fee line item.
What, which, which impact, I'm confused. So, you'll have a water impact fee typically, because you have to buy for the, pay for the impact you're doing to the system. You have a development impact fee for all the harm you're causing for everybody else in the world. Typically, though, you also pay for the water meter itself, too, for the connection.
But that would come out of utilities, would it not?
No, 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 the developer pays for that, unless there's something I'm missing here.
You'll, you'll let me help you with this?
Sure.
Veronica, this is not the development impact fee, just correct. The interdevelopment agreement, I believe, except for there is a, 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 before council, so you know it's a mess. With regard to impact fees, impact fees are the impact upon the system in the future. And you're correct that would be in the development order, the development order before us, and it wasn't part of that development order, nor brought up by the order department. And, and the answer is, it's a meter. If we had a hundred and sixty-four single-family homes, we would buy the meter.
Oh, okay, I was.
Do you see it? Do you see that?
I was, yeah, I was under the impression that the developer pays for the meter, because he's asking for the connection, so he's got to pay for the meter.
Nobody pays for meter. You get a house, you pay for everything but that meter, that's ours. So, just because it's a large amount, but I, I initially thought the same thing, so we're being our responsibility for that. Let's go to the other issue, what, what was done, if you'd like to revisit what is meant to be the value of stuff.
The, the, the proper funding source should be the utility department, then their utilities fund, correct?
That I'd have to refer to.
Okay.
We considered it an impact fee because it's an upgrade to the current system that's there.
Okay.
So, who's requesting this type of meter? Is the city requesting this, or is this the developer?
It's us, because the, the meters that are currently there are very old and, and, you know, basically obsolete. This is a complete upgrade, you know, to get accurate readings when this, you know, when this development, you know, starts getting, being built and put online. So, we wanted to go ahead and do this so we can pretty much account for every drop going through there.
Wait a minute, one question, you just said something, this, these meters only serve that development?
Yes.
Has the developer broke ground yet?
They've broken ground, I mean, I, I don't, I don't like, as far as what, building a?
Well, what, what I'm saying is, I don't want to be buying a meter that for a development that may not.
That may go bust.
That may go bust, may stop, may, and then we have a brand-new meter now sitting in, ready to be connected to a development that may never actually open. I guess, from that perspective, questioning, what is the lead time on that, on this meter? And how does that align when the developer actually would need it? Because why, we shouldn't be putting in infrastructure that we don't have a need for yet, knowing develop, things could happen.
As far, as far as the developer's sincerity going forward, I mean, that's a great question, because that specific piece of property, we've seen sitting for several years. So, I can understand that. This was a process of going forward, because as far as we knew that this was going in, so this is why we brought this, you know, to, to make this purchase. So, as far, as far as the information that I've received, is that the developer is going forward. Have they broke ground as of today? No.
Well, I mean, speaking from, if they break down today, you're probably not going to need a meter for at least six months by the time they're actually building things and doing things, so.
I mean, they're going to need water, they're going to need water for construction. Any type of construction they're going to do, they're going to have water purposes.
Well, isn't there an existing hydrant that they feed off of, or anything of that?
That would, well, any hydrant there would be at the street, that would require a hydrant meter. I don't know if they can reach the distance and where they're starting. You know, that's, that's the hydrants on ours, unlike on Washington Street, that's the closest hydrant they would have to work on. Because we're not assuming any of the utility inside.
What's the lead time for this meter?
As far as ordering, or?
Ordering, getting, and installing?
I'd have to find out from the develop, from the manufacturer, how long it would take to come, but if you wanted, I mean, in the motion to approve, we can say until, you know, until the developer has broken ground to install.
Or puts in a request for water service.
And along that line, so the other issue I have is, I'm, I'm not real comfortable with the funding source being impact fees. I think there should be a utility department fee. So, I, you know, I, I think we should take a close look at that funding source, too. You know, I believe meters should just come out of every utilities department. I, I don't think that, I don't think they can come out of impact fees.
No, in my conversations with the, the city manager and finance director, this was an upgrade to the current meter, so they fall under, you know, under impact fees, but if you didn't want to use them, that's to your discretion.
Okay. What I'd rather do is, if we're in a discussion still, is I, I don't think I would vote for it at this point. I, I think that the builder would have to, like Mr. McLaren said, put more forward and be further along before I think the city should put money into it. Number one, and number two, I want to be sure about the funding source before I vote on it. That's the other issue I have.
I agree with that.
I would agree, I agree as well.
And again, is the developer aware this is the way we're going? Do they approve of this, or is this going to be a surprise?
Well, it's not really to, you know, this is more or less for our benefit as far as accuracy and in improving the system, you know, to, to get a more accurate reading of what they would be using. But as for what Mr. Councilman McLaren is specifying, is that, are they using it now, at this moment? Have they broken ground to start developing? No. So, could, you know, is there, can we wait until we get more certainty from the developer? We could do that.
Basically, we, we own the system up to the meter, so wherever the meter stops is where we have to stop maintaining it. So, if you have a hundred or two hundred little meters, then you own all the infrastructure up to the meter, wherever the meter is. So, it's cheaper for us to maintain.
Definitely a better deal for us.
Yeah, it is a better deal for us, especially on a questionable system.
And, and with the price of building materials at a high right now, that project may be pushed back.
Yeah, I mean, he, he.
Quite some time.
He may push off just waiting for a correction, so. We can, we can agree to wait on a decision.
She made a motion. Motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Open it to the public, any need for public commentary here? Seeing no hands, let's put it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion to table passes. We're going to move on to the consideration of holiday fireworks, which is going to be Mr. Duke, pass that along.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed in the budgeting process, we discussed dates for, for fireworks, and it was general consensus that we wanted to push that off to the July fourth weekend. Staff has made contact with fireworks vendors. There's at least one, maybe not more than one, that is willing to commit to the same price, a thousand dollars a minute, about twelve thousand dollars for the show, the same conditions, and put on a fireworks display on the second of July, which I believe is the Saturday of that weekend. So, coming to you for confirmation of that, and a motion to approve, and we'll move forward with it. That assumes you want fireworks on the second of July, not in December, not available on New Year's Eve. And right now, we had one vendor tell us not possible to commit, another vendor tell us maybe, maybe not, depends on whether we can get fireworks, and a third vendor was willing to commit to the second of July. So, looking for your confirmation, that's the way you want us to go.
Motion to approve fireworks for July second.
Second. Before we go any further, I see some, one sign-up, Ms. Rogers, from the public. Okay. Would anyone else like to speak before we vote? Seeing no hands from the general public, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to move on to discussion of Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program, which is FRDAP is the acronym, and that's a grant for the waterfront park. Motion passes, we're gonna move on to discussion of Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program, which is F R D A P, is, uh, the acronym, and that's a grant for the waterfront park pier, and I'm gonna pass that to Mr. Duke for, for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we have, over the years, received F R D A P funding for waterfront park for a, a number of improvements. We have an opportunity to, to apply for, basically, phase four. The city just closed out phase three earlier this year. The pier was in the budget, either in the last phase, or the, you know, a couple of phases back, and never was, uh, built. We've subsequently learned there's opportunity to apply for more funds than we did in the past. I think in the past, we've asked for fifty thousand dollars, and that included a pier on the task list, you're not gonna get a pier for fifty grand. And so our intent would be to have Ms. Lynch pursue grant funding for the total amount of a pier, somewhere in the two hundred, I think we were at one eighty to two fifty, obviously broad guesses, we've done no pre-engineering. But before we spend a bunch of staff time and, and collaboration with the state, I wanted to make sure that that's the direction you want us to go, and if it is, then we'll put shoulder to the wheel and get after it. If it isn't, then, you know, we've, we've got other things we can work on, but this is a big project, it's a lot of money, and it, um, would make a significant change at waterfront park to put that pier back in. But I want to make sure that that's the direction you want us to go, before we put a lot of time and energy into, and some money. It's always better to make a grant application with at least conceptual drawings and, and spending some money on, on architect and engineer. So, basically, we're looking for your confirmation that you want us to move forward with this. And if not, that's okay, we'll take it off the table and, and not waste time on it, but it's a big enough project that, uh, I don't want to surprise you with it in three months.
So a question I have, is the money that you apply for, is dedicated strictly to a pier, or can be applied to other projects within the park?
It, we tell the state what we want money for, and that's what we've done in the past, walkways, benches, improve the bathrooms, so on. And we could do the same thing this time, we could say we want A, B, C, and D. With a, with an ask this big, you probably don't want too many subsequent points on your list. But yes, you can, we have the opportunity to ask them for whatever we can imagine that we would want in waterfront park, and it's specific to waterfront park because of the state's relationship with that property. So, uh, if there were other things you wanted in waterfront park, and you want us to pursue grant funding for that, we can. And, and we've done that in the past, you know, phase one, two, and three have done a lot of work at waterfront park, but if you want a fishing pier, it just made sense to us to, let's take phase four, ask for what we need to get the whole thing done, and, and call that the project for phase four. But, short answer, we can ask for all kinds of things within the parameters of the state's limitations.
I'm not familiar with, with the so-called pier that was there, I, I don't know. I have some mixed feelings on it, the first time when C A C came together, we went out to that park, we did the cleaning, and I can't tell you how many syringes that we found among the rocks in that area, the isolated area, west of that bridge. It's remote, I perceive this being a hangout, especially after hours, that, you know, police department will have difficulties controlling, enforcing. So I, again, I am not familiar with this pier, and I'm not sure if this is something we really should look at, pursue, I don't know.
I think, um, aren't, aren't those parks closed, and you guys clear the park when you close it, correct? Okay. So.
Once upon a time, like I said, when we went out there on that Saturday morning, and there was four of us, that, that west side, right along that walkway, that, that bridge, and if we picked up twenty to thirty, uh, syringes all over that area, uh, it was a lot. And, and we informed the police department at the time what was going on, obviously something is taking place there. But, again, looking at that area, it's, it's isolated, uh, you know, a patrol car cannot get to it, you know, it has to be on foot in order to patrol that area. I just hate the idea of, of creating something that is gonna become a, a local hangout, another headache that, uh, for us to deal with, unless there's something better that we can do to improve that area. I, I don't know, but putting a pier out there, I think it's just gonna make cause of, of a great place for other activities.
My, my thoughts on this, we're a waterfront community, we have a lot of nice waterfront parks. We do have the, the old pier, which people fished off at all the time, is, looks like it's a safety hazard, it's been closed by the city. My thoughts, it would be nice to have a pier somewhere where our citizens can go fish, or go for a walk, or whatever they want to do there, you know, and. So I like the idea of having a, a pier, I, particularly to fish off of, for a lot of people, with some kind of maybe gazebo at the end, so it's shaded. So, I like the idea, I think waterfront park makes the most sense, it's a passive park, I don't think there's much else you can do with some of that property. I know in the past, we, I think the, the playground went in, the dog park, and some of the improvements around the bathroom, so the park has been improved. So, you know, to add another improvement or amenity to that park, I think would be great. Whether or not it's a, a fishing pier versus anything else, um, you know, I'm pretty open, but it would be nice to have a fishing pier somewhere within our city, if not there.
I'll look at risk and return. You say you're gonna be committing a significant amount of staff, um, resources, plus ten thousand dollars of associated expenses?
That, that's a generous estimate, I would guess, but, yeah, there's some cost there.
What are our perceived odds of obtaining these funds with that expenditure of thirty thousand dollars?
I wish I had a, a way to, to evaluate that, about all I can do is say, in the past, we've been successful in acquiring F R D A P money to improve waterfront park. We have a good relationship with the staff at the state level, both Tricia and Pam are on a first-name basis with the people that oversee this grant. They want us to apply for money, they don't, you know, they're not gonna tell us, apply for a pier, or a park bench, or whatever. But, and, and some of that's been redeveloping that relationship, and getting us back into compliance, and getting caught up on our paperwork, so we have a good relationship with the staff. They want to continue to support the park, am I gonna tell you, we've got a ninety percent, fifty percent? I'd be, I'd be making it up and guessing, and, uh, wouldn't want to do that.
So it's a thirty thousand dollar investment in resources, staff time resources, and associated consultants, with a better-than-average probability of obtaining some funds?
I'd, I'd be more comfortable with your first number, probably ten to fifteen thousand. We're gonna have a good number of hours of staff time to write the grant, to communicate back and forth with the state.
I'm looking holistically.
Sure.
Thirty thousand dollars worth of staff resources, if you took hours of staff time and added our consultants.
Right.
It would probably be around thirty thousand dollars.
Sure.
Thereabouts, could.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to ballpark numbers here. I mean, to me, to me, the investment is good, I, I agree with Tom, is, is the pier the right thing, or is there some other avenue we should be chasing? I, I don't know the answer to that, but, I, I mean, I think the grant itself is a good idea, but, you know, what do we want to do, I guess, at the end of the day? And is that pier what we all want to do, or what our citizens want to do for that?
I think we definitely need to have a pier in the city, especially if the one on the other side of the river ends up closing down, and we have no pier at all. I think it's probably a good investment, I think thirty seems high, even with the conceptual, uh, I think that's probably a little on the, but probably better higher than, than lower. I thi, I think it's actually a good thing. We are looking at substantially more funds than we've asked for in the past. We've gone from about fifty thousand dollars to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so I think that changes some of the, uh, our chances of, of getting that passed as well. But, uh, I think waterfront park should be a waterfront park, and I think a pier is an important thing to have in the city, especially if we lose the one on the other side, because that gets used a lot. So I would, I would like to see us proceed with that.
And, so you know, Mr. Dittmer, and, and the rest of you, the, part of the reason we kind of expanded our vision, uh, was state staff telling us, there's a lot more available, you don't have to apply for just fifty. And I, I think historically, we've applied for fifty several years in a row, we've received fifty, and more or less, we've spent that. But state staff made us aware of, there's more money there, think bigger, and so, that's kind of what led staff to start wrestling with, you know, if we had a lot bigger check, what might be a good project for waterfront park. But I, I would, I would agree, the state's gonna budget their money, too.
Yeah, but sometimes, when they give you a wink and a nod like that, it's, it's because they want you to do it, so. Like I said, I think, uh, waterfront community, we need some type of, of fishing pier for, for people who don't have boats, and, uh, the pier, uh, when I go by in the boat, or even when you're sitting at catches, there's always people on that pier fishing. So I think it's a needed item for the city.
Finally, we have somebody who's gonna do grants. For years, we've had nobody that has been available to do the research and do the work to do the grants. We are a waterfront community, our waterfront park, this is the largest park that we have. I think it would improve the utilization of the park, to have fishermen come in. I think that is what we need to add to that park, to make the utilization better, because people like to fish in this area, and they would enjoy going out to do that. I think that we need the pier, I think that we have the grant person here in place, I think that we should go after every dime that we can get to help improve this city the way that we need to. I get a lot of people that say waterfront park is just useless, because nobody uses it for anything, nobody goes there, so let's make it more attractive. I mean, they've talked, you know, Sims Park, they keep talking about how great Sims Park is with all the, uh, facilities and things that they have available to them. I think this would add to our park, it would improve the park considerably. And I think that the people that live here would be really happy to have, be able to walk down to a pier and go fishing. I, I like the idea.
I like the idea of applying for the grant, I'm not a hundred percent sure about a fishing pier, but I, I, I feel the park needs some work done, it needs to be more attractive. And, and what direction to go, I don't know, but if that, that money's available, we should go for it. And, and I ask, you know, do we have to be specific what we intend to use this money for?
Yes, sir, we, we would have to put together a, a plan, whether it's a pier, or park benches, or improving the trails, whatever it is, they're not gonna give us money if we just say, you know, we want to make it look better, they, they're gonna want specifics. And, and we've done that in the past, we've said, you know, we're gonna do this to the trail, we're going to, you know, put in these playground pieces of equipment, or whatever it is, so. You don't have to get into the specifics of which park bench you're buying, but you do have to give them a ballpark budget and a, and a ballpark outcome, so that when they come do their audit, they say, okay, you said you were gonna buy five picnic tables, let's see them.
But going with a pier, aren't there restrictions going into the waterway as such? Are we grandfathered in to what we can do for the previous pier? Uh, what are the restrictions that, that are involved? You know, I hate, hate to put down a pier, and we run into all these roadblocks, and then we could utilize.
We haven't got the money for it yet, so we're worried about.
Yeah, but we could find it for other things as opposed to a pier.
Most grants, under the experience that I've had, sitting up here for five years now, most grants have specific allocations for while they want their money spent. So, you know, if we can't meet those allocations, then we don't get the money. If we need the allocations, then we get the money, we build it, so I think that we should see if we can get the money, and then find out exactly what we're restricted to.
Well, I think.
But I think that applying for the grant, which is what this whole issue is, is to, to use the staff to go and see if we can get the money.
Motion.
And all we're doing right now, when it comes to getting the money, then we should be having a discussion on whether or not we're gonna have problems with the drugies over there, or whether or not a pier is the best choice for the park. If we can get the money, I think we should get started doing.
Well, we can't get the money until we tell them we're gonna build the park, uh, build the pier, or build whatever.
Right.
So, so it's definitely a chicken.
It's a choice.
It's a, it's a chicken or egg, we gotta make that decision, what we want now, in order for them to go get the money.
I can't, I can't think of anything more that you could put in that park that would have a, a better draw for the community than a fishing pier.
Yeah, and I think that we would be able to permit that, I don't see why we wouldn't.
No, I, I, I think we wouldn't have a problem with that, so, but we don't need a motion for this, we just need to come to an agreement, we want to pursue this.
That's right, that's all, I thought we were talking.
It's just a discussion.
I, I just need direction.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm, I'm for pursuing the grant.
I'm for pursuing the grant, and then I think we should follow up with all these in-depth questions.
I'm for pursuing the grant, and for pursuing the grant for the purpose of a.
Pier.
Pier.
Pier, yes.
Okay, so just to clarify, because I, I think they're saying that they want to pursue the grant, I don't think there's any question pursuing the grant, the issue is whether or not we want a pier, and, and I'm for pursuing it, for a pier in that area.
I'm all for a pier this year, and then I want something else next year, I just haven't figured out what it is yet.
Okay.
You've got a year to come up with.
I got a year to figure it out.
Yeah, sure. So, we have.
I have direction.
By consent.
Thank you.
So we're gonna move on at this point. I see some hands up, normally, we, we don't have input from the general public unless there's a, an item that's gonna be voted on. This was a consensus item in the discussion, so, um, when it comes back up, if there's any motions on this, and the general public will be able to come in and, and give some direction. Our last item is also a discussion item, number eight, is discussion of utility impact fee stormwater rate study, and I'm gonna pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so, again, my intent is just to make sure that we're all on the same page, we've, uh, staff has been doing a, a good deal of work preparing for a rate study, to include looking at our impact fees and the development of a C I P for, for utilities. We've gotten very rough estimates, uh, on what that's gonna cost, uh, it's our strong desire to start with the stormwater rate study. That's the one with the most compelling fiscal need right now, and so whoever we would engage for the work, we would ask them to start with stormwater, focus on that, get us a stormwater rate study done first. Part of the reason I wanted to bring it up is because each piece of this is probably gonna be over my spending authority. We're looking at anywhere from ten to thirty thousand dollars per piece, stormwater, water, sewer, and then looking at impact fees and C I Ps. So, I, I'm trying to prep you for not having sticker shock, you know, if, if we are all on the same page, that we want to go ahead with, with utilities, rate study, with impact fee review, and with the development of a utility C I P, just looking for consensus and agreement that we're, we're gonna spend some real money to do this. We're not gonna get the whole thing done for ten or twenty thousand dollars. But I'm looking for your input and guidance and consensus.
This is an item that, that I started with, I guess, a few months ago, and I kind of brought it up, um, and I, I was hoping not to have to piecemeal this, I was hoping to get an engineer to come in and just look at the city holistically, and tell us, give us recommendations for, for each, uh, different area, impact fee, stormwater, et cetera. The problem I think that we run into is that I think our stormwater rates haven't been reviewed in such a long time, that there's probably a, a fairly dire need. So, I, I definitely like the idea of pursuing this, I, I think that we should start with stormw. I, I think that we should start with stormwater. But I also like the idea of engaging in some engineering firm that can look at the city holistically and come up with a plan. If we have to put a Band-Aid and handle stormwater first and parcel that out from the rest of the utilities, I'm okay with that. But I, you know, I would like to engage one company for the entirety of the city in terms of looking at everything as, as a whole. And, but starting with stormwater, if we have to part that out upfront, then, you know, I agree with that. So I, I think that's where we should start.
Yeah, this study, this is way overdue. We've all been looking at this for a while, and I, I, I think it's a good idea. I do agree with the mayor. It would be nice to have one company come in and take a look at the whole overall project. But I understand stormwater is a, in dire need. So if we have to do it that way, I agree.
Councilwoman Sorel?
After the last discussion, I wondered if we could get through this if we're gonna do it in more than one phase. It would be great to go to one source and get it. Is that source available?
Yes, ma'am. And I, I don't mean to imply that we would hire a different company for each study, not at all. But what I would envision is, is scoping the entire project, rate, utilities rate study, impact fees, and utility CIP. That's one scope. And then direct the company to say, we need this task done first. Do the whole thing, but the first, the first deliverable, we need stormwater done. But yeah, I, I would in. Rough estimate, twenty thousand per piece. So we may be looking at seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars for the whole thing. Yeah. 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 And. Could be. Yeah.
We did have some kind of water study, didn't we, several years ago?
We had rate studies, where the, if I remember correctly.
Rate study.
They were really pretty low compared to the rest of the state, so, you know, we went, we, we, we estimated that, but we haven't changed those weights for a year, just a number of years since we've been up here. Where, where did this come from? Utilities?
Yeah. Utility funds.
Not to overspend the ARPA, can't we use some of the ARPA funds for the utility?
I'd be glad to look at the final guidance, but yeah, if, if that's available, and if that's the priority you want for it, yeah, we'll sure look at that.
We spent that ARPA money four times already.
Yep.
Well. I've, I've got a long list. Yeah.
So, so what you're wanting to know, if you can, is we're going ahead in the utility with a study cost of around a hundred thousand dollars, would this.
Yes, ma'am. Just looking for consensus that we're all, we're all on the same page.
I agree.
I don't think we could do it without a study, do I agree?
I agree. I agree we should scope out a study, maybe look at phasing it, so we're not taking that hundred thousand dollar hit in one year, maybe over two years or something of that nature. And I agree making stormwater the priority to that, and then figure it out as funds, funding or funds become available.
Okay, one more comment, Matt, that please find several different studies so that we don't have to go through this. Have we done the comparative study thing? So please check out several different sources of, of where we can get somebody to come in and do the study.
And my intent would be to bid it out. Bid, this is a big enough project, we'll put it out to bid.
And if we put it out to bid, that means that we'll have whoever's available and interested in, in helping out Port Richey with this study, and we can make a decision for what comes available. And we will have fully researched their options on that, I'm sure. Our staff is very good at that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And part of the rate study will include, 'cause obviously, we have a lot of infrastructure needs, whether it's either stormwater or utilities with the meters upgrading, the pipes, the sewer pipes, the sewers, with the other one we haven't touched on. So we'll have to get a, a plan. So they'll do that as well, obviously, look at the infrastructure.
Right.
To set, to set all those rates.
Yes, sir. There's, you can do a rate comparison, that's pretty cheap. Somebody calls all the other municipalities and says, what do you charge? They make us a list, and, you know, we decide whether we want the rates to go up or not. That's not what we intend to purchase.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, we, we need to know are the rates, at what rate are we sufficiently funding our infrastructure, our, our long-term maintenance, our capital?
I, I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page.
Yes, sir.
And I'm, I'm talking not just utilities, but you got sewer, and even stormwater, you with, with, you know, there's some upgrades that we can do there as well, so I just wanted to make sure.
We bought up infrastructure several times that we needed, so this is a good starting point to get us the right direction.
Okay, so by consensus, if we, 'cause it's not a motion item.
No. Proceed, proceed.
Yep.
Proceed.
Understood.
Okay, and that closes out discussion on item eight. I'm looking, well, before we go any further, I'm gonna start to my right this time with, councilman, can sell any, any old business?
Nothing.
Nothing here?
No.
Looking for a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.